So we are working extremely hard to ensure that we begin all of our meetings on time. And so, thank you so much to each of our staff persons that have made an intentional decision to log in today to our reopen Strong Town Hall meeting. Please note that this session has been recorded and it has started to record at the time of us opening it up today. And so, in an effort to ensure that any staff person who does in fact want to hear information from the town hall specific to staff, will have a chance to hear this once we release all of the recordings on Friday of this week. We also will have an opportunity to create a frequently asked questions document based on questions that we are receiving in all of the sessions. There was a session earlier today for students, there's a session obviously now for staff, and then tomorrow we have four sessions for families, three in English and one in Spanish. And so, we're gonna go ahead and get started. All screens should be muted. If you choose to in fact have your screen on for video, that's totally okay, but it's not an expectation or requirement for this particular town hall. We'll share information with you, at which point at the end we'll give you an opportunity to ask any question that you may have. There'll be a chat feature that we will, there will be a question answer link, excuse me, that we will place in the chat feature, at which point you'll be able to put any questions that you have in the chat feature, we'll be sure to account for those. So that will help us also create that frequently asked questions document for those who aren't here today. It is extremely important to note that as we start, you see the paragraph at the bottom of your screen, "While we engaged our community, our students, our families, our staff from the spring and the summer, we heard loud and clear our desire to focus on safety as our priority and learning." And so, whether we are at home or in school, those two are our number one areas of focus and ensuring that we have equitable access to all resources and all supports regardless of who we are and where we are. We're also committed to high levels of transparency through this process, and we want to simply thank you for joining in with us today to hear our updates as we currently have them. So as we look at this photo, we want to definitely provide an introductory, introductory, excuse me, opportunity at each of these pictures. And so, on the left you see a fly, right? You see a fly that is literally on your hand right there in your face. All of us today probably want those level of answers. We want that level of detail regarding how am I gonna do this on this day at this time? And we aren't there yet. I'm just gonna go ahead and put it out there. We all heard information from the school board at the same exact time, two weeks ago and Tuesday night. And so, in an effort to take us from the fly on the left to the tree on the right, which is where we heard big picture, right? Today is in an attempt to ensure that we narrow our focus to the middle with that fly on the leaf. And so, I want for you to travel down this road with me today with being a fly on a leaf, and very soon we'll have an opportunity to have that fly now in our eye this close up in personal, but it won't be today. Alright? So I just wanna be sure that we all kinda understand those levels of details. So our agenda is listed here. We won't spend a lot of time on each of these areas, but it is important for us to know that information presented in this presentation is applicable to South MECC, and it is subject to change in the event that we have new guidance that comes from the district and/or from our federal state of CDC or other local agencies. And so, for as much as we are working very hard to be sure that you have what we have, please know that it has been very fluid and every single day we learn something new, which is, you know, probably why you don't see me with a beard, because it's just important that I stay ready for whatever comes. Cut it off, grow it, who knows what happens, right? And so, WHO2 itself, you've seen this before, we're not gonna spend any time on there. It is important that you know though, that each of our staff, each of our students are supported by their alpha, and so not by ninth, tenth, or eleventh, or twelfth, there's no special academy. So if you have questions that students may have of you, please ensure that they contact the appropriate school counselor, or dean, or assistant principal based on their respective So Plan B Remote. If you have not been listening to the news and/or you have not had an opportunity to watch any school board meetings, then this will all be brand new to you. If you have had an opportunity to stay abreast, then you may in fact have an opportunity to have a refresher today. And so, what is Plan B Remote, Mr. Starnes? Plan B Remote is Plan B plus remote, excuse me, is Plan B where students will have an opportunity to come to school for face-to-face learning over the course of the first two weeks from August the 17th to August the 28th in three cohorts. Students in fact, who are a part of Plan B plus remote, will be distributed into three cohorts that was already determined by the district. We here at South MECC did not determine which students would be in which cohort, but it is in fact a cross-grade cohort. So students ninth through 12th grade will be in the same cohort, it's not based on last name, so you'll have students A through Z that are in your classes in that respective cohort, and it does allow for siblings or any individual that lives at the same address to attend on the same days. And so, for example, if Glenn Starnes has a sibling that is in third grade at Smithfield Elementary School, then my third grade sibling will attend Cohort A at Smithfield while at the same time I am attending Cohort A at South MECC. Or even if I'm an 11th grade Glenn Starnes at South, and I have a 12th grade brother that attends South, then both of us will attend during Cohort A. While Cohort A is in school on August 17th, 18th, and 19th, students in Cohort B and C are not in school on August 17th, 18th, and 19th, and they will be working on areas that will be virtual that we will share with you at a later date. Those will not be areas that you as a teacher will be expected to work on or to provide for students while they are away from school on those days. You will notice that August the 20th through the 25th, when Cohort B is in school, that's four days, whereas Cohort A and Cohort C are only in school for three days. Those dates again were not set by the school, but based on the information we have received, Cohort B is intentional such that in the event that we move from Plan B plus to a Plan B or a Plan A, then we'll have an opportunity to account for Plan B having less days later on in the year where they currently have four days in the first two weeks. It's also important to note that our 8A/B Day schedule will be in effect, and so yes, that does mean that if students are in Cohort A, then those students will only go to their 8A class on the 17th and again on the 19th, and their B Day class would only then meet on the 18th of August. That is current, that's the current information that we have that will be applicable for all high schools across the district. As we think about Plan B plus remote orientation, the three or four days depending upon the group, again, Group A is here for three days, Group B is here for four days, Group C is here for three days, those students will have an onboarding in small groups, and so again, those small groups are intentional because yes, we have nearly 3,400, I think 3,410 students now that are scheduled to be at South for the upcoming year. If you take that 1/3, 1/3, 1/30, you do that calculation, it's gonna have you in and around 1,100, 1,150 students. And so, based on that, we will have those students in small groups when they come on campus, and the orientation will be inclusive of, but not limited to the areas which you see here. Social and emotional learning and that check-in with students to ensure the positive well-being for our students is gonna be critical. Sharing with them the expectations and procedures from an instructional perspective is gonna be critical, and having an opportunity for our underclassmen students to take their school yearbook photos during that time is also critical. So then we shift from Plan B plus remote to a different model of the full remote academy, alright? So when we, a few will actually provide you with a overview, understanding of what the differences are between the two by way of a chart. However, this slide shows you what is the full remote academy. The full remote academy, the name changed from full remote option to the full remote academy to ensure that there was no confusion with what was available from the state for a Plan C. We know that our school district approved Plan B plus remote, and that we are not operating in a Plan C, so you will not see anything that says Plan C. But the full remote academy, students can and parents can opt into the full remote academy versus with Plan B plus remote, that's just school as we currently have it. It is an application, applications available online, registration closes on the 26th at 11:59 PM, and students can transition in and out of the full remote academy only at the semester break at the parent request. So that means if I'm a student who I am intentionally gonna sign up for the full remote academy because for whatever reason, then my only time to leave that, should I be interested to then go to Plan B plus remote or any other plan, school district has approved, it's only at the semester break, and the same for the opposite. If I'm in Plan B plus remote, I cannot shift over to the full remote academy even if the school district on October 31st makes a decision that they're going to change Plan B plus remote to now be Plan B where we come to school in 50, with no more than 50% capacity, or Plan A where we all come to school. If I no longer want that option, I cannot make that decision after July the 26th until the semester break. So this chart here, we'll spend a couple minutes on, but this really gives you a comparison. This is very helpful to parents, but we wanna be sure that it's also intentionally available to students and our staff which are here today. This shows you in number one, Plan B plus remote, what is it? So this means I want my child to attend school in person when allowed by the Board of Education. We know right now in-person education is only allowed during the first two weeks for orientation, and then after those first two weeks, we will be in a remote phase until the Board of Education makes a decision to return back to in-person learning. In this particular action, there's nothing that's required for the student or the family because all students are by default in Plan B plus remote, but the opposite is the full remote academy, this is where you opt into, alright? So students and families opt into, and as staff, you as a staff person will continue to provide the same level of instruction to students who are in Plan B plus remote and those students who are in the full remote academy, and we'll talk about that in just a few. But really, the full remote academy is for that parent who says, "I want my child to stay at home full-time to continue remote learning through the first semester," because again, you can opt in or out at the first semester break point, but not before and not after. The registration deadline, as we mentioned, is July the 26th, and we at the school level will have an opportunity to know who those students are as early as this week Friday, and then we'll get the final updated list next week once the district has finished scrubbing that information. If you as a staff person just wanna know more information about what are the options that are available for students and families, please check out the CMS website or call the call center at 980-343-3001. But again, this chart here gives you the best example, in addition to one other chart we'll show in just a few of the differences between the Plan B plus remote and the full remote academy. This is simply a diagram which has been very helpful to families, but we left it in the slide deck for staff members which shows you simply from a different perspective what that looks like under Plan B plus remote and the full remote academy. So as we go into the school year, it is gonna be critical, and I'm gonna repeat, it is going to be critical that we understand that expectations are very different from the expectations during the fourth quarter of last year. And so, I'm gonna repeat, it is gonna be very critical that we all understand that our expectations are very different from expectations during quarter four of last year. That's from a student perspective, from a family perspective, and from a staff perspective. Over the past week, I've learned this new phrase that we don't rise to low expectations, and so, once we set the year from the beginning with high expectations, it is gonna be extremely important that we all rise to those, and it starts with our bell schedule. And so, all across high school and CMS, you will notice that this is the standard bell schedule that has been released for all high schools. You also will notice a couple changes, and I want for you to know and understand that we at South MECC are leading from a transparency lens. I cannot guarantee that your colleagues in other schools may have or see or hear this information, and so I want you to realize and know that we wanna give you as much as we can, as soon as we can, starting with our bell schedule. So the differences as we think about bell schedule for Plan B plus remote and the full remote academy is much of nothing. So the only difference is the arrival time and the staggered dismissal. And so, you will see on Plan B plus remote, students can begin arriving on campus at 6:30 AM to 7:15 AM for grab-and-go breakfast. That is different and that is new. So what that will mean is the staff arrival time, which was 6:45 AM, will in fact have to be shifted to an earlier time than 6:45 AM because the bell schedule in all high schools in CMS has shifted. That also means that we will not have breakfast available in the cafeteria for students to eat in those areas, breakfast and lunch per the schedule that you see as grab-and-go for the Plan B plus remote. As we then look at our blocks, you see first, second, third, and fourth, you will notice that there is 75 minutes that's available for students for instruction, which is very different from what we had in the past, which was 90 minutes. So again, our bell schedule had a 90-minute transition, whereas here you will notice that 75 minutes for each block. Then you also will notice our SCL or advisory, which is a new block, what is not enrichment, which is not homeroom, which is not a flex period, that is not my restroom making that noise by the way, that's the hallway, I don't wanna think that's what's happening in my office. However, it is important and critical to know that this is a separate block, okay? This is a separate block. Just as a reminder, I see a number of questions in the chat feature, please note that we are not monitoring or accepting questions in the chat feature. There will be a bitly link that's in the chat feature once we go through the presentation that you can list any questions you have so that we can capture all of those questions. It is very difficult to capture them in the chat feature when we are presenting. So again, arrival, 6:40, 6:30 to 7:15, not 6:45, our blocks are very different, they're not 90 minutes, they're 75 minutes, and advisory, you will notice it's 45 minutes. You will also notice that during third block, we have, we being the district, has built-in time for lunch at a grab-and-go model, and again, we'll talk about a few areas and a few on health and safety to be sure that we all understand what that lunch looks like. And then we have staggered dismissal, where beginning at 1:45, we will begin dismissing students from school on a staggered dismissal by buildings. Again, the, notice the differences between Plan B plus remote and the full remote academy are very small. So yes, if a student is enrolled in the full remote academy, currently their first block class is scheduled to begin at 7:15 AM for students and staff in order to engage in instruction at that time. In the full remote academy during third block, we will in fact have a standard lunchtime for staff and students at the same exact time, which means that no, we would not have instruction happening at that given time. So again, that's the bell schedule as we think about instructional expectations that looks and sounds very different than it has in the past, and once we go through some additional information, you'll see and hear why it's gonna continue to look and sound different. As we think about attendance, again, expectations are very different from what they were during the fourth quarter of last year. Attendance counts every single day, and even on our remote instruction days, attendance is determined by daily evidence of student engagement and instructional content. This is including but not limited to attending and participating in our synchronous instruction, evidence of engagement in class material on canvas, and submission and completion of assignments and assessments. At the high school level, attendance will be monitored every day for every class, and teachers will log their attendance in Power School. That's every day, every class, even in a remote phase. Our administrative leadership team will be conducting a weekly review of the student activity dashboard in Canvas that will allow for us to see and identify students who have not engaged, and then we will be able to provide them the necessary supports by leaning on our student services team and our students' success team members, by way of our APs, deans, counselors, student services members alike, social workers, psychologists, to provide the necessary supplemental or intensive supports as needed and as necessary. So again, staff and teachers, this looks very different than it did in the spring as we think about attendance and engagement of students. So additional expectations, you as staff members have heard these terms and you probably are tired of hearing them, but it's important that you know that synchronous learning is different from asynchronous learning. And so, when we were in school in the spring, we had lots of asynchronous learning happening in the sense of asynchronous learning where students were provided assignments on Sundays, they were expected to complete those assignments on by Thursdays, teachers then graded them, they put informal grades into the grade book. That is not the same model that we will be using going into August 17th in a remote Plan B plus remote or a full remote academy. We will have a blend of synchronous learning and asynchronous learning such that our students will be expected to have live stream instruction and synchronous or synchronous instruction, which includes video conferencing, teleconferencing, live streaming every single day for every single block for at least 40 minutes. Again, every single day, every single block is expected to have synchronous learning for at least 40 of those 75 minutes for each of those blocks. That's very different, I see heads, that's very different than it was in the past. And so, of course, there are limitations and advantages to both, but the reality is our students will not be in an asynchronous environment starting in August, which will cause us to have to shift our thinking and shift how we operate instruction based on our experiences from the spring. So this is another chart that provides us with an opportunity to see firsthand the differences between the two. So as we think about instructional expectations, for our student session earlier today, we walked them through a number of these, but we did not walk them through all of them because it is extremely important to understand as teachers, you see things different from how students do. And so, if a student is in Plan B plus remote, or if a student is in the full remote academy, regardless, they still will have the classes that are on their schedule that our counselors are working to finalize by a assigned South MECC teacher, even if it's a four-by-four class or 8A/B Day class. So Mr. Starnes, what does that mean? That means in your Canvas and on your Power School, you will have a section for first block that may say AP Psychology, First Block, Section 12. Those will be your students that are in your Plan B plus remote, your typical students that are always gonna be in your AP Psychology class, and then at that same first block will be the students who were in your Plan B plus remote, but their parents have now opted for them to be in the full remote academy, they will still be in your first block class, they will just be in a different section number. So the section number may say 712 because the 700 designation will allow for us as all staff at South MECC to know and understand that that student is in a full remote academy course. The courses are the same, they're not any different, the teaching is the same, the instruction is the same, because on August the 31st, all of our students will be remote, and they all will receive the same level of instruction, the same Zoom link or the same Canvas link at the same time in order to engage in the same learning. When I speak of that, it is extremely important for us to know that at this time, the district has made a decision that all courses will be using Canvas. We all have known that since June, and so we all should've already had an opportunity to participate in very Canvas learning PBs in my talent, but the district has not made a decision as to if the primary platform for video conferencing or live instruction will be Zoom, or will be Canvas, live, or will be Google Meets, or what it will be. We don't have an answer to that one yet, but what we do know is our students in the Plan B plus remote and our students in the full remote academy will be receiving live instruction at the same time based on their current student schedule. All the classes will be the same based on everything that we already offered, nothing's gonna change. Students that are enrolled in Automotive 3 Honors will still receive instruction in Automotive 3 Honors. Mr. Atkins, one of our district lead teachers, has worked with the district to ensure that students still receive that remote instruction even in those type of courses. Additional comparison and differences, our classes regardless, Plan B plus remote or full remote academy will have synchronous and asynchronous learning. We will be using Canvas as the platform. Students who are registering for athletics will, or students interested in athletics will have a chance to participate in athletics regardless of Plan B plus remote or full remote academy. Clubs or organizations, students will be eligible to participate regardless of Plan B plus remote or full remote academy. Our EC services, our EL services, students in AP classes, our world language magnet students, they all will still have the same level of instruction regardless of the Plan B plus remote, which again is the first two weeks I come for orientation based on my group, and then August 31st on full remote, or the full remote academy which starts on August the 17th. Grading and assessment, at this time, we do not have the information from the district at any high school as to how will students be graded, or what their assessments will look like. That information is forthcoming and we don't have that yet, but the differences are in Plan B plus remote, that could be adjusted at any time based on a school board decision, and so if on October 31st, the school board decides, we in CMS are no longer in Plan B plus remote, we are now shifting to a Plan B, or we're now shifting to a Plan A, those students that are on your roster in that first section are the ones who would now shift, whereas those students who are in the full remote academy are the students who remain full remote until the end of the first semester, and their parents can make a decision to shift or to remain. It's also important to know the differences, all the social interactions during orientation, that three or four-day orientation based on your group, students in the full remote academy will not have that, and it is also important to know that here at South MECC, as mentioned last week in our staff updates, we will not be using any NCVPS classes except for our students that are receiving an OCS diploma, and that is very intentional. All of our students will be expected to engage in live instruction from South MECC teachers, and again, we will not be using any of the resources from NCVPS, and it's important to note, we won't be using any of the resources from Edge Annuity either unless that student is enrolled in Saber Academy, which is Saber, which is credit recovery or initial credit outside of the regular school day. We all know what Canvas is, and so if you are new to the district, then it's important that we connect you with your POC lead, your department chair, or your respective AP or dean, so that they can connect you with Canvas if you don't know what it is already. But as teachers, it is important to know that Canvas does have a family support model, and parents can log or download the app onto their phone, and it is a great two-way communication tool that is provided for families to communicate with teachers. As we think about the health and safety plans, and so we know that here in the state of North Carolina, all of our schools have been provided guidance from our Lighting Our Way Forward document from NCVPI. And so, a laundry list of our plans are listed, but it is important to know that we will have one-way hallways in buildings for all of our buildings across campus. It's also important to know that we do have grab-and-go breakfast and lunch as mentioned. Students are not permitted to eat lunch in the cafeteria. At this time, students will be eating in their classrooms or other designated locations on campus that will be supervised. I will tell you as principal, I am working extremely hard to ensure that students do not eat in their classrooms and students have an opportunity To ensure that students do not eat in their classrooms and students have an opportunity to eat. In locations outside of their classrooms by way of the courtyard, the senior courtyard, the mall. Other locations on campus to ensure that teachers have an opportunity to have that break for lunch where students are not in their classrooms. But if you read the Lighting Our Way Forward document, which is available online by simply Googling it or going to the NCBPI website. It specifically says from the governor and from the State Board of Education that students are to eat in their classroom. So note that that is not a Southmech or CMS, that is straight across the state. You will also notice that there will be no more than sixteen students in each class. You will also notice that there will be no more than twenty-four students on a bus. Students will not be permitted to use the restrooms during transitions, which is why we have across all high schools in CMS, a ten-minute transition. Understanding that they will have one-way hallways in buildings. And to ensure that we have our social distancing requirements, students will be expected to use the restrooms during class time only. All staff and students will be required to wear face covering that is cloth at all times when on campus. Again, per the Lighting Our Way Forward document, that is an expectation that is listed. Daily cleaning schedule and monitoring and restocking of restrooms in campus buildings is going to be critical along with the ongoing and renting classroom cleaning and disinfecting. And so our team is currently working on our duty schedule for the first two weeks of school. As a part of that duty schedule, there will be areas on our campus at all points throughout the day. Which will include the checking of restrooms to ensure that those restrooms are properly stocked. Such that any in the event that any student or staff goes to the restroom, they will in fact have the. Tools and supplies necessary for that person to execute the duties that they go into that restroom for. Ongoing classroom cleaning and disinfecting, we know that in between classes. Classroom desks are expected to be wiped down and any other instructional items or materials that are used are also expected to be wiped down. And per the document, that is an expectation that is provided or expected of the teacher. We do know that there are some flexibilities potentially at the high school level where students. Are able to be provided with the tools to do that wiping down prior to the next student coming in with the adult supervision. I mentioned the stagger dismissal at the end of the day by building very similar to how we do on early release days. At this time, this building is released, please make your way to your proper locations, you all know what the announcement sounds like. In addition to our increased time between classes that we spoke of. We do know for sure, we will not be operating tardies the first two weeks of school, just to put that out there. We will have staff in locations to ensure that students aren't in fact utilizing our one-way hallways and one-way buildings. And we will in fact have our hand sanitizer stations at the entrances of those buildings, which are the one-way entrances. And each teacher will be provided a hand sanitizer station for their classroom areas. Floating teachers will have the hand sanitizer station in the classroom that they are going into. So at this time, we're going to begin our question-answer period. And so on your screen, you should have a Bitly, on that Bitly allows for you to capture any questions that you may have. While we are putting the Bitly in the chat feature, I'm going to read off a couple of the. Questions that are listed in the chat feature while we are waiting on individuals to have an opportunity to list their questions in the Bitly. And so the first question is, is there a transition time between first block and SCL advisory, that answer is yes. SCL advisory is not attached to any class, it is its own separate class, it is its own separate class, it is not enrichment. So this should be. So currently that's listed on the schedule and we're going to go back to it, we'll be sure that we adjust the area that is listed, but there is in fact a transition between sec- between first block. And SCL, and so yes, students will in fact transition from first block to SCL then to second block. We will ensure that that adjustment is in fact made for you, very good point. Is there a transition between maybe SCL delivered in first, again, based on the information we've been provided, that is, it is truly going to be a separate block. Very good question. In SCL, it will not be like homeroom or won't be like enrichment, attendance will in fact be taken and. This will be a very mixed group, and so you will have students in that SCL class that are from ninth to twelfth grade. Curriculum resources are work being worked through, and we have a team of individuals who volunteered to work on that for us. We had a great meeting with them this morning, lots of ideas, and we're working on finalizing that now. However, it is critical and important that we know that that will be a different group of students in a different block. And those students will not be based on last name, so you won't have all the Bennett's in one room. You will though have students' grades ninth through twelfth in a randomized fashion. We're going to start reading off our questions, you'll have someone read the question and then I will work and do my best to answer the question for you. Please, 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 begin reading off or listing any questions that you have, if it's a duplicate question. Then please know that we will work very hard to ensure that we only answer rounds. So our first question.
For the first four days of onboarding, are the students who are remote during that time receiving assignments as well? What if they are in the last group and meet us last, so you do not know how it went on to Canvas? Or are we just focusing on the kids in person?
So as we mentioned, while students are in school on the first three days, if they are in Group A. That means that students in Group B and C are not at school. And so we as an administrative leadership team will be working to provide the resources for students to work on while they are not at school. Which will not be an expectation of the classroom teacher to give those students those resources. Which means that they will not be applicable or will not be applicable to your respective course or your respective content. What that could include is that could include. A video on Title IX and the expectations for Title IX that we know we normally would have to do at the very beginning of the year. It could also include an orientation on how to access Canvas resources, so lots of things that we are working through. It also could include some Naviance information, how to utilize the resources available in Naviance. And so those seven or eight days, excuse me, those. Six or seven days that a student is not in school the first two weeks, we as an administrative leadership team are working through what that will look like. So that that is not an ask of teachers. What we are asking teachers to do of course is to ensure that with fidelity, we implement the orientation materials that are expected to be covered. Those three days for Group A and Group C and those four days for Group B.
Will students who have opted for remote academy be in solely asynchronous learning for the first two weeks? If not, what technology will we have access to to make sure that remote students can access our live instruction?
So for the first two weeks, very similar to what those students will be doing, those six to seven days when they are not here for orientation. We will be providing our students who are truly in the full remote academy with opportunities to ensure that they are learning that is taking place. During the time prior to the August thirty-first launch of all remote learning for students in Plan B plus remote. And for students in the full remote academy.
How old floating teachers go about sanitizing their classrooms when floating, will it be at the beginning or the end? And how could there be a few floaters who are put in common areas?
So floating teachers, the expectation will be for all teachers to make the sanitation, to complete the necessary sanitation. At the end of the class such that when students come in for the next class, if it's your class or not, then if they, that particular. Group of students are ready to receive a clean class. And so in the event that. Not in the event, excuse me, we will not have common areas for classes to, two or three classes to be in a location together, we cannot do that. Based on the requirements that have been set, it isn't going to be critical that we utilize our classrooms. For designated locations for instruction and not common areas for, you know, two or three classes to be together. We have to ensure that no area has more than sixteen students.
Who is the plan cleaning materials for classrooms?
So classrooms will be cleaned on a daily basis by our custodians and miss, our members of our administrative leadership team are working with Ms. Craig, our lead custodian. And have been doing so all summer, we do know that our classes will be cleaned, all classes will be cleaned each day. As we think about cleaning materials to wipe down your desk and wipe down areas that are used during that instructional time. We as a school will be providing those and the school is receiving those resources from the district, which is inclusive of hand sanitizers, hand sanitation, excuse me.
If we are streaming for forty minutes or block live, that is getting a lot of data, how will this be handled with students who have hotspots or limited data?
So the technology resources is a concern across the district. It is a state expectation that students have that at least, per the state, it's thirty-nine minutes, and so our district has rounded that to forty minutes. And so as we think about hotspot data, then that obviously is a concern that is available across the entire district. And I'm sure that the district technology department has continued to receive that question from South Admin and from other schools, and we have not gotten an answer on that yet. But the expectation is there across our district that live instruction is happening in both a blended asynchronous and synchronous model.
During the two-week onboarding process, will students who are remote be receiving independent or alternative instructional activities versus those that are delivered face-to-face?
I think we answered that question, if we didn't answer that question to your liking, simply let us know.
What time are teachers coming to campus, looks like students reporting starting at six-thirty, do we need to be there by six?
So students are coming to campus starting at six-thirty, and so we will have an adjusted time that we are working through. Right now, we do believe that that means staff will have to report to school each day at six-fifteen AM.
Are there district-specific guidelines in regards to remote learning that should be included in the syllabus that teachers distribute?
So just earlier today when we had our senior, our, excuse me, our administrative leadership team meeting, we talked through. Information that we have received from the district regarding the remote learning guidelines. We are still receiving all that information from the district, we have not gotten that, but yes. We will be sure that all classroom teachers have the remote guidelines available to include in your syllabus and. We will also be mailing those remote learning guidelines to students in our back-to-school mailer that they will receive. When we mail them their schedules. And if Christie or Michelle, if you can remind me what's going in the back-to-school mailer so we can tell teachers what's in there, because they may want to know that too. So all of our students will receive their back-to-school mailer and that mailer will go out on August the seventh. In that back-to-school mailer will be the student class schedule, will be the blue card, will be the ID badge. Excuse me, the district has made it clear that all students must have their ID badge. With their picture prior to school starting on August the seventeenth this year, because they will need an ID badge to access food. For breakfast and lunch, there is no opportunity to type in a number, everything will be scanned, and that's a part of the health and safety procedures. Therefore, as a result, we must mail ID badges and have all thirty-four hundred of those ID badges printed prior to school starting. And so that will include again, the class schedule, the blue card, the ID badge. There will be a infograph page that talks about technology help and how to receive technology support prior to the first day of school. On that same infograph page, there'll be information on how to read your class schedule, how to understand your class schedule. What is the bell schedule, what are the remote learning guidelines? There'll be a information on transportation, what time your bus will be arriving to your residence based on what we have in Power School. There will also be a welcome letter from the principal and a couple of other items that we're still working through, but students will have that prior to the first day. So that they in fact know how to access Canvas even if they are a student who is not in Group A, hope that answered that question.
Is the schedule that you provided in the presentation going to be the same schedule that we follow once we all transition to remote learning on August the thirty-first?
So we can go back to that slide and that slide shows that yes, we will have that same schedule. For Plan B plus remote and for full remote academy. So the schedule that you see on your screen now is the schedule that is for full-time. Plan B plus remote and for the full remote academy.
What support to be prepared for in case a student or staff member refuses to consistently wear the mask?
So the question as relates to if a student or staff person came up earlier from students, they wanted to know what if a staff person chooses not to. Human resources are providing schools and school leaders with a standard operating procedure manual. To ensure that all of our students and staff understand. A, what the expectation is, and B, failure to do so, what are the consequences thereof? Because it is extremely critical that we all know that the expectation is there, whatever the expectation is. And failure for us to comply will then cause further action to take place, even if that is a staff person. I cannot stress enough that all of us, all of us want to ensure that all staff persons and students remain safe. While at the same time receiving a high-quality equitable instruction and be in an equitable learning environment. Whether that is in face-to-face or remote, but we cannot do that if all of us don't assist with those high expectations. And so we care and we want to be sure that our staff and our students do that, and we will be sure to share what those consequences will be.
How can we support the students' mental and emotional issues on the remote lessons?
So our student services team led by Rachel Patrick, well, obviously they have a student services POC that meets very regularly. And that regular POC will continue to meet throughout the school year. Ms. Ye, who was our school psychologist, led that group last year. And as we think about the social and emotional learning of our students, that will continue to be a focus for us, but it is extremely critical that we know. Per the schedule that we saw, the social and emotional learning block is not just for students who are in Plan B plus remote. That block is for students who are enrolled at Southmech. And so all of our students will have the same social and emotional supports available regardless if they are in the full remote academy. Or if they are in Plan B plus remote.
What will our protocol for temperature checks be, will teachers be responsible for this?
So the wellness checks that will take place on a daily basis per the Lighting Our Way Forward document, which is available to all of us. The district is providing the standard operating procedures for what that will look like. But what we do know is that staff members at each of our schools will be expected to participate in those wellness checks, what that will look like. We do not have a full answer to because we've not yet received that information.
Will the teacher sign-in process look different to account for sanitation?
So I'm going to walk us back to that, their second slide, which was the fly in my eye versus the tree. We have not gotten to how staff will sign in, and I'll be honest with you, that has not been a top priority for us. Because we truly, we truly want to be sure the safety of all. And how staff sign in due to that process has not been the number one priority. However, it is something that we are looking at, currently our staff sign-in process does not require for anyone to actually sign in. It requires a swipe of a fob, and if we continue with our sign-in and sign-out process in the manner in which we have. Then that process will be continued.
Is there a date when CMS will be reevaluating our return to school plan?
So last night I had a wonderful opportunity of listening to the school board meeting from, I think it was. Five PM until about ten-thirty or six PM until about ten-thirty. And at that time, they had not said any information as to when the, they will reevaluate the plan. I'll be honest with you, as a school principal, I hear the information through the school board at the same time that you do. And so for as much as we do have very regular principal meetings and we get great updates as principals in those principal meetings. We do not have any decisions from the school board prior to the public seeing those just as you do.
What's the protocol for students who do not show up during their specified onboarding days?
So the attendance slide that we saw walks us through the attendance expectations for students. And those same attendance expectations apply for students even on the orientation and onboarding days. Whereas if you are absent from class, then you are considered unexcused. And very similar to the school year, you are expected to provide documentation to shift that unexcused absence to excused.
Will teachers be responsible for teaching either in the remote academy and in-class instruction? Should the schools return to Plan G or Plan A fashion? Or will there be assigned staff members for the remote academy specifically?
So there will not be assigned staff members. So there will not be assigned staff members for the remote academy specifically. Teachers will be expected to provide instruction for students that are in the Plan B plus remote and the full remote academy beginning on August the 17th. On August 31st, all of our students will be in fact enrolled in remote learning. Should our school board make a decision to shift Plan B plus remote to Plan B or Plan A, which means that our students who were here for orientation in Plan B plus remote would now be expected to attend school in a up to 50% capacity, excuse me, if it was Plan B or in a 100% capacity, if it was Plan A, then those students who are now in the full remote academy would be either zoomed in or Google Met in or Canvas live in to the instruction that has taken place inside the classroom in an effort to ensure that we have very high level and equitable instruction taking place for all of our students. Again, we have no students that are going to be on NCVPS, no students that are going to be on Edge Annuity and no students that will be assigned to a staff person outside of South MEK. All of our students that are assigned will follow the class schedule that is listed in Power School and our teachers will teach the students that are assigned to them in Power School. Students won't see the difference. The only difference teachers will see is they will see section 12, for example, and a section 712, for example.
Will there be a daily screening or temperature check for all students and staff during the first two weeks? If yes, what does that process look like?
So very similar to the same question that was asked earlier. Again, we do not have the full standard operating procedures. We do know that per the lighting our way forward document, the document speaks to wellness checks taking place on a daily basis. And again, we are waiting to receive information from the district on what that looks like.
Have the mobiles and other smaller classrooms been measured for the six feet apart to ensure a max of 16 students will fit?
So this nice document, this nice, what is this? This nice PVC pipe, PVC pipe is six feet. And so we have in fact purchased a number of them, which allowed for us to know what is six feet and what isn't. The district used South MEK as one of our sites that we in fact personally, I personally walked the mobiles along with our senior administrative team. Our APs and deans have walked our campus as well to know that yes, we can in fact accommodate 16 students in all spaces on our campus while maintaining social distancing, absolutely.
What will the return to work orientation for staff look like? Or when can we expect to receive details that outline that process?
So typically, we don't have that information this early. I recall last year I started work here at South MEK on July 8th and we probably didn't tell teachers anything about back to school until August the 8th. And so on July 22nd, we are still working through that information. But we do know that starting on August the 6th, staff are expected to return back to work to fulfill their contractual duties per our respective assignment. If we are a 10 month employee, that's August 6th. If we are an 11 month employee, that's August 3rd. If we are a hourly employee, that could be August 17th, depending upon our position. We do know that we have began discussing what that work will look like on August the 6th and August the 7th, which are required district workdays and then the remaining days, which are required site based workdays. And so yes, there will be onboarding for our staff members, which will in fact include how to use Canvas, what the Canvas world looks like, how to provide remote instruction that's high quality and equitable. How to ensure the health and safety of students. Let's practice and let's practice and check for understanding to be sure that we all are very clear. So we will be very intentional about what that looks like. And at this time, it is still an expectation that staff report to work on August the 6th and ensure that our classrooms are where we're prepared through our teacher workdays for our students who will be starting on August the 17th. Just as a small plug, not that this is designed to be plugs, but for a small plug, please don't forget if you are interested in coming and setting up your area prior to, those dates do start on all, July the 27th. That information was sent out prior to today. And so we encourage you to do so to relieve any stress or anxiety that may be caused in trying to do so much when school starts on August the 6th. Because again, all of us are walking into a new job, a new assignment. That's the real reality. I did not sign up to be the principal of Virtual South Mecklenburg High School. You did not sign up to be the teacher at Virtual South Mecklenburg High School. And so we all have to work through this together and be flexible because we are truly as a world and as a nation, building this plane as we go.
As we are setting up our classrooms, will we have diagrams to show us possible ways to set our rooms up?
So we do not have any intentions on getting into the weeds that will, we do want for you still have to have flexibility in and around how you set up your classroom because it's your space. The reality is you need to plan for 16 and you need to plan for social distancing of six feet from one student to the next. That varies across all of our buildings because all of our classrooms look different from our science classrooms in O to our lab classrooms in C to our trailers or our mobiles to our classrooms here in A, all of them look very different. And so that is a teacher autonomy to be able to make that happen.
Can you talk about the distribution of classroom materials and supplies?
So at this time, we don't have that information available of what the distribution of classroom materials and supplies will be because the district is in fact working through the Canvas shells and the need to ensure that many of our resources are digital in an effort to ensure that there is not a grave need to distribute many resources, which is inclusive of textbooks. We know that for some classes, we rely heavily on textbooks, but there have been a number of conversations to ensure that we have opportunities for digital textbooks in comparison to actually issuing students textbooks. Looks like that's all the questions that have come on the bitly. Are there any questions that have come across text messages team?
Being that many of us will be cleaning our rooms between classes, would you consider allowing us to wear jeans so we won't ruin our professional clothing?
So I want to be clear that between classes, we're not cleaning classrooms, right? There's no expectation for us to be cleaners of classrooms. There is an expectation similarly to what we would do at home after we finish eating, that we wipe the table. And so in an effort to ensure that we still maintain the professionalism, we will review that as a team to have that discussion. However, I want to be sure that we know that we are not cleaning classrooms between classes. Just wanted to make that, be sure we were clear about that one.
Each teacher will be teaching the SCL block and will be given supplies?
Yes, so each teacher will be teaching the SCL block and that is all teachers, all department chairs, all PLC leads, all teachers will have the SCL block and you'll be given the necessary resources to make that happen. For our F building teachers, a question came through as well. You will have an opportunity to go into your building once construction is complete and the date on that bitly, if I remember correctly, was August the 3rd. But we can ask Ms. Kears, I know she's in her office. Ms. Kears, if you can stop, step over to the front conference room and let us know. I'm pretty confident that was August the 3rd when F building teachers will be able to come into their space. August 3rd, 4th and 5th is when F building teachers will be able to come into their space. And if you look at that bitly, you should be able to sign up starting August 3rd. If not, just shoot Ms. Kears an email and she'll be able to assign you to a date. And so as we think about the first three days of school or the first few weeks of orientation, calculate how will calculators be handled? That is yet to be determined by our district. If in fact, we will have a need to use calculators on those three days, in the event that we do, then we will ensure again that you have the proper disinfectant wipes and necessary supplies to wipe down the calculator, just as you would wipe down the student desk or the table inside of that classroom. Again, the, for the teacher who reached out about the F building, I will contact you directly with Ms. Kears's email so that you have it. Or actually, we're just putting it in the chat. Can you put Ms. Kears's name in the chat? June M.Pierce@cms.k12.v a.us, not V A, N C, the wrong state. June M.Pierce.
For SCL lessons in the World Language Department, are we going to receive the lessons ahead of time in case we want to teach in our target language?
So teaching in the target language is not an option because all of our students will be learning SCL the same way. And so this is not being taught by department. SCL lessons are SCL lessons. A German teacher could be teaching students who take no German classes at all. Teacher students will be assigned to classes very randomly and all students will be expected to in fact take SCL in the same fashion, using the curriculum that is provided. It is going to be critical though, that we all note and understand that it's, SCL is not homeroom. It is not enrichment reinvented and it is not an opportunity for intervention or enrichments.
What will open house look like?
So open house, all back to school freshman orientation, open house, meet the teacher. All of those events will all be virtual and that information will be shared early in August, those dates and those times. However, it is going to be critical that we do remember that A, they'll be virtual and B, they will be all packaged under the umbrella of Sabre University with virtual opportunities for students and families to log in and receive the necessary information.
Where are we able to go during our planning period? Is it the same space as it was this past year?
So each building has a designated teacher workroom in it in addition to the E building, which has a designated PLC space. And so teachers who have planning periods in which their classroom is being used by floating teacher will have those opportunities to go to those locations on campus. We always do have the courtyard, both the senior and the E courtyard that's available in other locations outside of your assigned duty space, which could be taking place during planning periods as well. It is critical that we understand that we are only in school for two weeks. Again, we are only in school for two weeks in the Plan B plus remote model. And so the need to be flexible is going to be so, so, so important because it is all hands on deck to make these two weeks happen prior to us all going into a full remote phase, regardless of if the student is in the Plan B plus remote or if the student is in the full remote academy. Think, sounds like we've answered all the questions that were in the bitly link. Again, the purpose of us putting questions in the bitly link is so that we can have all questions from our student sessions and our family sessions and our staff sessions, such that we will be able to begin creating a frequently asked question document. And in the event that we had all questions just popping up in Zoom chats, then it would be very difficult to manage those answers for the questions that were listed. So again, we thank you for your patience and we thank you for your flexibility. This level of flexibility is obviously what's going to be needed to go on to this new school year as we all are learning to be virtual teachers, which is not what 90% of us learn when we went through our teacher education preparatory programs and or when we left corporate and decided we would now have a newfound love called education. So thank you so much for all that you do and have an amazing day. Go Sabres.